Good evening and welcome to the December 9, 2013 Burnsville Planning Commission meeting.
Welcome Commissioners.
Thank you.
Welcome Staff.
Thank you.
Welcome everybody interviewing and listening audience. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Any changes by Commission?
None from each Chair.
Staff?
None from Staff.
Alright, I would entertain a motion then.
I move.
Move by Mr. Bradrick.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tahiri. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. That passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the November 25, 2013 meeting. Any changes from Commissioners?
Staff?
None from Staff.
I would entertain a motion on that.
Go move with the Chair.
Moved by Mr. King.
Second.
Second by Mr. Thomas. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. All opposed? That passes 5-0. Next item on the agenda is the public hearing for Burnsville Sanitary Landfill Application for a Conditional Use Permit for Reconstruction of a Temporary Maintenance Road Located at the landfill property at 2650 West Cliff Road. Mr. Slenia.
Thank you Mr. Chair Commissioners. This is a public hearing for the Conditional Use Permit. As the report outlines, the maintenance road is within the 100-year floodplain and has been subject to flood damage over time. The applicant is seeking to rebuild this in the same location. However, the height would be increased to prevent further damage. We're looking at approximately 1,200 linear feet of road. The subject site is zoned CRD, which is Commercial Recreation District. It's also got a PUD approval for the end-use plan, which would be a Public Recreation Facility. The site is designated as MRQ in the Comprehensive Plan. Let me jump to some images. Put it all in perspective. To put the project in perspective, here is Highway 13 running east-west through town. The quarry is off to the right. And here is the landfill. This is the approximate area of the improvements. Again, this is the 300 acres of the landfill. To put it in perspective, it is surrounded by industrial on all sides of the subject site. And then here's a close-up. Again, we're looking at this road segment right in here. And this section right here. As I mentioned, the current roadway has been subject to flooding. The existing elevations range from 717 to 718. Again, that floodplain is right around 717. And thus, any fill or work done in that floodplain requires a Conditional Use Permit. In this instance, the applicant's done a nice job. We are not impacting flooding downriver. We're not limiting flood capacity. All those things have been worked out with Staff and we'll get to those details. But the simple fact that that flood, the work, the fill is being brought into the floodplain, that triggers the Conditional Use Permit, the review by the Planning Commission and City Council. As I say, we're dealing with approximately 1,200 linear feet of roadway. Depending on where we are, here's an overview and the topo lines. And here is a section view of the road. The existing road is dashed in here, the light gray. And the proposed is the solid level, excuse me, solid line. Depending on where we are within the roadway segment, the proposed elevation is between 718 and 722. So anywhere from 1 to 4 feet of change to accommodate the flooding taking place. There's also a ditch proposed on, this would be the north side of the roadway, directing any stormwater or floodwaters to a culvert right in this location. Those will be two pipes running under the roadway. And then the, if I can get to the image, then rainwater, or in this case floodwater, then continues down, continues down a natural ditch that runs along the railroad tracks. That is the way the situation is now. That's the way it's going to continue. Staff has reviewed that. And we're just making sure that there are not substantial changes to the end result of those floodwaters as they come through. And then, they will essentially fall between the landfill and the quarry and these properties just north of Highway 13. And they follow that ditch to the east. Staff's Water Resources Consultants spent quite a bit of time with this and working with the applicant. As I stated, there are some findings that will satisfy the Planning Commission's, the Council's concern. It will not impact flood heights, will not impact water supply for the sanitary systems in the area. Also, the roadway improvements will lessen the susceptibility of the landfill facility due to these sites getting that road raised up so they can continue operation on a regular basis. And finally, the roadway exists today. It is in use. The reconstruction is not intensifying or in any way changing the underlying land use of the sanitary landfill. It's consistent with the PUD. As I stated in the report, we've had a condition that it does go away at the decommission of the landfill. And that would be consistent with the previous approvals. Again, the long-term use of the landfill and the long-term use as a golf course when that's done is not impacted by the proposal. The applicant's done a nice job of putting the plans together. Mr. Hillgardner and I are here for any questions the Commission has. And BSLI has a team here. I believe that can answer your questions as well.
Thank you Mr. Slenia. Any questions from Commissioners, from Mr. Slenia or anyone? Mr. Thomas?
Staff, the north ditch, why don't we just drain that into that sedimentation basin? Does that have some special designation? Or why are we bringing that water back across the road to the south?
Well, that pond at this point is being utilized as treatment that was part of a separate project. This project itself, in and of itself, is small enough to where it doesn't require treatment. There's not enough impervious area. We didn't look at the overall impacts of actually putting that water in there. I mean, that pond was designed for a different, you know, that entire project in and of itself. It's not to say that we couldn't put some of that water in there. But again, this ditch is basically an overflow. This is actually taking the floodwaters that would happen, not treating water. It's actual floodwaters that we want to distribute off of the site. And that's what it has always done down that north ditch. So that's why those culverts are being placed in there to transfer the water from the north to the south. So it's really a protection so that that water doesn't continue to back up onto that site. It's really not, we're not really treating the water per se. There's not a large enough volume to treat there. In fact, that pond, that sedimentation pond, when it does overflow with floodwaters, also goes into that ditch and does exactly what this is intended to do. So we're just basically not treating the water from the roadway.
Right there. Mr. Singh?
And give us the Chair, just a follow-up to Commissioner Thomas's question. Now, the culverts will be comprised of two pipes.
Correct. Well, it is, it's, there's two separate culverts and they're sized accordingly to essentially provide equalization. They're going to transfer water, but they'll also provide equalization so the road doesn't deteriorate during the process of the floodwaters coming up. It provides that those pressures within either side of the road to essentially not deteriorate that road construction.
What, what would be the diameter of one of those pipes? So that, the reason I'm asking, make sure that if you have overflow and you have a heavy downpour rain, that the water will not be backed up, but will flow.
Yeah, I don't have the plan in front of me. Do you know Tim offhand what, 12-inch? Okay, I thought for some reason I saw 15, but they'd be, they're, again, they're not necessarily made to transfer water. There's plenty of capacity within the pipe. They're really primarily for equalization. Because when the floodwaters come up, there's a potential that, you know, that things are just going to equalize on each side. So I think a 12-inch, if it is 12, in fact, we did the computations, I thought, I thought it was a 15, I think, Tim. But it is plenty adequate. We've checked everything with the hydraulics, so it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Thomas?
Well, just a follow-up to that. It seems a little, a little redundant. I mean, I can understand the pipes to equalize the floodwaters on the north side of the road. But it's also capturing the water in the ditch. It just seems like it'd be a better idea if we contained our water on-site until it flooded by putting that water into, directly into the sedimentation basin rather than into the ditch and into the pipes.
Sure.
It's just an idea that.
That's, that's a very good idea. We could definitely look into that. I mean, that definitely would keep the water on-site until it does in fact flood. Yeah.
Sure.
I was just going to add, I think.
Why don't we do, why don't we do this, actually? Why don't we continue with you and then we'll give you a chance to come up and explain that right after he's done.
That's better. Any more questions for Mr. Slenia? Mr. Tahiri?
Thank you Chair. The existing road as we, as it is now, what are the construction of it? Is there just a natural ditching or slope? Or is there a manhole or culverts in there?
It is, it is a gravel road with a ditch, correct.
So we're basically improving that road with more constructed. My second question. The new road, everything we see here, is this permanent or anything temporarily we are putting there to further development takes place?
As far as temporary goes, it is, you know, over the next one or two decades that we expect the landfill to continue operation. The road's not being designed in this case to bring on more traffic or capacity or anything like that. This is strictly internal site, not open for general public. But Commissioners, I do apologize. Here is one culvert. Here's the second. Both are, both piping is equal size.
So we're basically going from top and the slope down in each culvert.
Correct.
The way I see that. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bradrick?
Chris, as I was reading the background, I guess I envisioned this at a different part of the landfills. This is actual, the flooding works its way all the way around the landfill from the river.
Correct.
And then there's probably some, given the height of the landfill, there's probably some runoff from the landfill, correct? Probably to get to this?
I can't say how much, but there is, there would be some.
Okay.
Correct.
Because when we, when I was first reading the background, I had it in my head that this would be at the northern end of the landfill from flooding from the river. But as I read the background, I see that. So, yeah, I always have a question about conditions. So the condition that we have in here, the, because we've dealt with some stuff in the MRQ lately where there, you know, something would be terminated after a certain point. We don't, we've done nothing in the way of timeframes. And so everything is, in my correctness in saying everything, is for the removal of the road goes back to the original PUD?
Correct.
Where lately, we've done some stuff with an actual end date or time for removal.
Correct. All those simple, specifically Commissioners, to simplify this, this project and not revisit the entire PUD. Staff is just looking at tying the removal of the road back to the end land use of the landfill, which are spelled out in separate agreements and separate PUDs. So this, you are correct. If it was possibly something more substantial or more of a unique situation, we'd probably tie a specific date to it. But we've established those dates with the applicant already previously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you Chair.
Great. Anything else for Mr. Slenia? Thank you. Sir, why don't you step forward then?
And Commissioners, Commissioner Bradrick brought up a good point. It is, it is unique when you look at the flood map. And I believe I eliminated that from some of your documents just because there's so much. But the floodplain does follow this road, which is the high point. So it essentially circumnavigates the landfill because landfill sits up so high. The floodwaters will encompass everything to the west and then run along that property line.
Thank you, Mr. Slenia. I want you to state your name and your address, please.
Sure, Tim Arvidson. I'm with the design firm Stone Brook Engineering.
Alright, what's your business address, sir?
Business address is, what is the number? It's 122, I apologize, we just moved there a year ago. You wouldn't expect me to know the address already. 12279 Nicollet Avenue, Burnsville, so.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
You had a comment for a couple of questions.
Yeah, well, it sounded like you guys were questioning the decision of having that ditch not go into the storm pond. And I think the reason that we showed it the way we show it is because the storm pond was specifically designed to control the rate and volume and get the treatment that's needed for the area that's contributing to that storm pond. So if we impact that storm pond by adding additional water to it, it actually was going to require going back and revisiting potentially the design of the pond itself. And there was such a small amount of impervious that was being created as part of this, there wasn't even a ponding requirement for it. So instead of impacting what was already done, constructed and functioning correctly with a project that, you know, was essentially just transmitting water through the site at no greater rate than was there before, we thought it was prudent to leave well enough alone with the existing pond and just take care of the water that's running off on this site specifically, if that makes sense.
Any other questions? Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody that has any questions or comments on this proposal is encouraged to step forward and voice those at this time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Any comments on this from Commissioners at this time?
I'm in support.
Alright, I would look, Mr. Singh, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I think this one is for Chris. It says here that pursuant to 1010-5B3 of the zoning ordinance, the use of fill within the flood fringes, fringe requires a Conditional Use Permit. This, the applicant is seeking approval. What bearing this had to the previous one they had? They had a CUP before, didn't they?
The landfill exists as a PUD. There's a number of PUD approvals over it.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? I would look for a motion then.
Mr. Chair, I beg to move that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council the approval of the application for a Conditional Use Permit for Reconstruction of a Temporary Maintenance Road Located on the landfill property at 2650 West Cliff Road with the following The roadway will be removed consistent with the PUD as part of the end land use plan for which the landfill, for when the landfill is decommissioned.
Thank you. Moved by Mr. Singh, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tahiri. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes 4-0 and we'll go to the Council on?
It goes to the Council Tuesday, December, excuse me, 17th, next week.
Alright, thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Ross Investment Property of Burnsville, application for a preliminary and final plot of a one-lot subdivision to be known as Tri-State Bobcat Edition and a Conditional Use Permit for Outdoor Sales and Storage located at 1200 Highway 13 East. Mr. Slenia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to clarify for the record, even though Commissioner Jew looks here, we still have five voting members. So I'll note that it was approved 5-0 rather than 4-0. But let us move to the application for Ross Investments. The property, commonly known as the Burnsville Bowl, exists as a, in a B3 zoning district. Interestingly enough, the address is 1200 Highway 13. The site actually does not exist on Highway 13. It exists off of Riverwood Drive. It's been somewhat of anomaly since its existence, so we'll just continue the address. That's what everyone's familiar with. The site sits on Riverwood and 12th Avenue. As indicated in the background, it is just on the edge of the I-1 Industrial Park. Much of the Lark Industrial Development sits north of this site. So it is industrial on the north and across the street to the west. To the east, it is surrounded by B3 and B3 PUD. The site is guided as business retail office in the Comprehensive Plan. And outdoor storage and sales is allowed through the Conditional Use Permit, which is what is bringing the applicant in front of us this evening. Tri-State Bobcat currently exists in Burnsville. They are down near County Road 5 and Highway 13, 1800 west. And they are simply outgrowing their current facility. They've been at that location for quite a while. They are looking to grow and expand. They're interested in this site, one because of the size and the versatility that it offers both inside and outside. Tri-State Bobcat rents, sells and maintains small pieces of equipment. Bobcat, Toro, Ryan are just some of the products they deal with for construction, landscaping, etc. Tri-State Bobcat does have two other locations. They're looking to utilize this site as their headquarters or their flagship store. And they do intend to, or I should say their purchase agreement with the current owners, they are buying the facility, they are looking to stay here long-term. To put it in perspective, again, I indicated the zoning surrounding the property. Highway 13 is just off the photograph on the south. This is the SA at the corner of 12th and Highway 13. There's a Burger King that sits over here. Fastenal is in this building right here. This is the credit union sharing the property line with the subject site. The applicant has done a nice job of updating both the building and the site with the project through the Conditional Use Permit. The east end of the site would be utilized as outdoor storage. There will be screen fencing around this. The applicant is also re-converting some of the parking lot, we'll get to this in a second, looking to display some of the equipment that they have for sale and for rent. Let me get to site plan. So again, here is the existing building. The footprint of this is not changing. Here you see the screen wall surrounding, a screen fence and screen wall surrounding the outdoor storage. Some key components I'd like to discuss first would be this east property line. The applicant is pulling back the storage 30 feet from that property line. Again, this is the line shared with the credit union. So the fencing will be pulled back 30 feet to add green space. This is a substantial increase in the amount of green space. Currently, the site is non-conforming. I believe they're at 21%. And the requirement is 25 in this zoning district. So the applicant's taking this opportunity to not only add green space, but add a landscape planting area that will help screen the views into this storage site. There's coniferous trees, overstorey trees that will help buffer the site. This, assuming 12th Avenue would, will be acting as the front of the building, this will be the primary screen wall for the site. This is a mixture of masonry block and ornamental fence. We've seen this at the Walmart Garden Center, where they've got the black ornamental fence, some masonry pillars within that, and then a black screen on the inside that really helps conceal the equipment. The rest of the fencing, the north, south and east side, will be a black vinyl coated chain link, again with the screen on the inside of that. All the fencing proposed is six feet tall. Due to the size of the equipment the applicant has, we're at six feet or less to make sure everything's screened from view. Tri-State Bobcat just isn't dealing with large pieces of equipment that would have a substantial impact on the site. As I indicated in the report, we've got two large rectangular pads here. This is for a Bobcat or something of that size. And the applicant's also adding some smaller circular pads, whether it's a mulcher or chip or something like that to mix in with the landscaping, really to give it the professional image, to give it some nicer curb appeal. The interior of the building will be completely remodeled. The applicant's looking at office and conference room space, a interior showroom, as well as a back shop where the applicant can bring vehicles in, in a heated air-conditioned space and work on them whether they are doing maintenance for a customer or prepping something for rental. And again, that gives the applicant space to grow and continue to grow in Burnsville. Here's an image of the proposed exterior of the building. The front of the building would be EFS. Colors are dark orange. Colors are dark orange and two-tone gray. You'll notice this band continues around the entire property. This is what you'll see as you're driving north on 12th Avenue. So this is what you would see from this corner of the site when you're out on the street. The balance of the site is block. It has been painted a number of times. You'll notice in the report, there was quite a history for the Burnsville Bowl property and their approvals. The applicant is simply trying to clean up and update the exterior of the building. This wall is currently, I don't want to say is blank, but there are no windows or openings except for a couple emergency exits along this wall. So these are faux windows. The applicant's proposing to help break up that space. It is a lengthy wall, and I believe the applicant's done a nice job to try to update Again, getting to the screening and the storage area, the applicant, the ordinance requires 100% screening of the equipment at the time of installation. So the applicant's done a nice job, especially on this long elevation, to incorporate landscaping as well as a screen fence that will be, that will be opaque as soon as it's constructed and allow some of these, some of the plantings on this side to grow and mature. The applicant is proposing six-foot coniferous and deciduous trees at two caliper inches, which is slightly larger than what the ordinance requires to, to give that some physical buffer. The applicant is also proposing to retain the sign structure that's on that south side of the site. Their plan would be to refurbish it, paint it. The structure would remain, but they are looking to add Bobcat on, Tri-State Bobcat on the top of that. Staff certainly sees the benefit from their standpoint of that visibility. We feel the, the structure's seen its day and not necessarily had its useful life, but we feel the site would be more attractive without it. And we are, have included that in a condition for approval. And again, commissioners were supportive of the application. There are five conditions in your background, but I'd like to touch on the good transitional use from the retail, really you're on the edge of the retail along Highway 13 to the industrial to the north. We feel this is a good use of the area. The applicant is certainly updating both the building and the site and views this as a long-term home for Burnsville Bobcat. I believe I've touched on most of these conditions. The first addresses the sign out front. The second is a small correction in the plat. We'd like to see before it gets filed with Dakota County. The third gets to a correction on the light fixtures. And really, four and five are, I don't want to say housekeeping, but four and five are also a paper trail so that if anybody would revisit the application again, why were they allowed to do this or how was this approved? We've got a correct paper trail in the conditional use permit. With that, commissioners, I know we've got quite the team for Tri-State Bobcat. I think we can answer whatever questions come up.
Thank you, Mr. Slania. Any questions for Mr. Slania? Mr. Taheri?
Thank you, Chair. I'm looking at the site plan here, Chris. What is the recycling trash enclosure of the property?
Yes, I apologize. That is, there is an existing addition, if you will, to the structure. It is a gabled roof on the east side. That was not reflected on the site plan. It is remaining. It was in some of the other documents. Sits right in this corner. While I've got the site plan up, I wanted to touch on one other thing. This is essentially the main sales entrance to the space. This will be a parts service rental space. So as you're picking up a piece of equipment or dropping off or something like that, the gate to the storage area will be right here. You can come in these doors and then access the facility. I apologize. Until you just said that, I didn't realize the enclosure wasn't on the site plan, but it is, it is remaining and will be consistent with the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Frederick?
Chris, just a couple of quick questions. Could educate me a little bit more on the sidewalk and the plat? I mean, is-
Certainly.
From a-
Actually, you can see it here. The yellow line represents the existing property line. And Riverwood Drive has a public sidewalk. And because the site has not been platted before, the public sidewalk falls within private property. And we'd like to see that adjusted so that the new property line with the plat is just a foot off of the sidewalk, so the sidewalk falls within city right-of-way rather than private property and then getting easements, separate easements.
So essentially, the property is so big today and we're going to make it slightly smaller to accommodate the easement of the sidewalk that's on-
Correct. Correct. I should also note, because the property is not planted, the property actually extends out into 12th Avenue. So that will be corrected as well. So the plat will reflect a revised property line on the west side as well.
On, just to, okay, on the light fixtures, I know we've dealt with some of those in the past in some car dealerships. Are these the light fixtures on the building or the existing parking lot fixtures we're asking them to change?
The light fixtures on the building. The fixtures in the parking lot are relatively new and they are consistent with the ordinance. They are downcast. On the building, you'll notice some of these wall packs, those are more of a security design and are gonna, well, they're not consistent with the ordinance just based on glare and spill. So as, as the applicant is remodeling the exterior, we're just looking to make sure that the new wall packs are downcast and shielded.
Okay. And then the last condition, no, no materials may be stored outside that are taller than six feet. So we talked about six feet and the fence and behind the fence, but this is to some regulation on the storage pads themselves? Because it says stored outside that are tall-
Oh.
I just wanted to make sure I understood.
That's a very good point. No, this, the intent of this is directly for the storage area.
In the, behind the fence.
Correct. So as part of the motion, it would be helpful just to clarify that. Staff will make a correction as this moves forward, if that's your pleasure, to make sure the, the six feet is directed towards the storage area and, and not the display pads. Yeah. They may choose to have a boom or a bucket raised up or something like that on the display pads to, to draw attention, and I'm sure that would exceed six feet.
And they had mentioned in our background, the, the city wasn't requiring it, but they had volunteered to move the equipment inside at night. It must be a security, but we weren't, I wanted to make sure we weren't requiring that. Because we haven't done it in other places.
We haven't done that in other places, and to be honest, it's a, it's a enforcement headache. We're not going to be checking nightly if the equipment's in or out, in or out. We'd leave that up to the applicant.
Okay. And they had just volunteered that. That wasn't something we were requiring.
Correct.
And then the, the sign removal, you had mentioned in our background that it's non-conforming today. I'm assuming the applicants want to talk about that. But do we, our past history of non-conforming signs, do we have a history of allowing in a, in a, in this instance where we have allowed a non-conforming sign to go forward with this big of a remodel?
Um, we, we don't have a sign quite like this elsewhere in town. Based on size and height, anytime we have the ability to bring something into conformance, we try to.
Okay. We kind of, we also didn't require the, because the ordinance on the outside of the building typically doesn't allow painting, but we've allowed the block to be painted, correct?
Correct. Previous, previous approvals allowed that. We're continuing that.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem. Very good questions. Appreciate it. Anybody else have any more questions? Mr. Thomas?
Following up on the sign, Chris. So it's a non-conforming sign, sign on size and height.
Correct.
What is the regulation on this property for size and height? Do you know off the top of your head?
I know I looked it up and I, uh, I apologize, commissioners. I will do some checking and I'll, I'll have that when I sit back down.
As a follow-up to that, Chris, it appears that it's just a wall sign that's allowed under this zoning.
Correct. I, I should, I should clarify, the, the applicant is intended to have a freestanding sign. And it would be, I'm not sure that it would be a, well, it would be a pylon by definition. It's probably in the 16 to 22-foot height area. This is substantially taller and substantially larger based on square footage than what the ordinance would permit. And if, again, should the applicant choose to pursue a separate freestanding sign, staff can work with that. We're, we're trying not to limit the applicant to just wall signs. There is opportunities out there.
As a follow-up to that, Chris, can you clarify, you've obviously had discussions and in our background it says there is a remaining sign area that can be utilized? Can you, can you tell us where that is?
Sure. The, the amount of signage allowed is based on this front facade because that's what faces the street. The applicant is, based on the size of the building, it, they're allowed 370, 380 square feet, give or take. Based on what's proposed up here, they're only at about 300 square feet. So there is additional signage to give, for lack of a better term. And staff was just indicating that can be applied to any side of the building they choose. Go ahead.
Another question. Regarding the outdoor storage, six-foot limit, being that this is a CUP for outdoor storage, have you guys discussed a little flexibility into that? Is that six foot going to allow them to operate without coming back in for another request if their equipment changes or something like that?
It will, it'll allow some flexibility. Again, it's an enforcement issue. It would have to be a substantial violation for staff to pursue something like that. Our intent is the equipment matches the height of the screen fence, thereabouts. Unless we have a complaint or something like that, we won't be out taking a tape measure to the, to the equipment or anything like that. But yeah, it's our intent, our intent that this allows them to operate long-term.
Thank you.
Chris, I just had a quick question on the signage. It sounds like they have 80 square feet, you said, remaining approximately. Would that be for this pylon sign if they chose to put in a new one or is that separate from?
No, it could be, excuse me, it could be applied to wall signage, pylon sign, or a monument sign.
I guess maybe I didn't ask that correctly. Would, if they chose to have a pylon sign, obviously, if they got rid of this and chose to put up a different pylon sign that was in conformity, would that then be limited strictly to the remaining approximate 80 feet?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I had. Anybody else have any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. And I'm guessing that somebody from Tri-State would like to step forward? If I could have your name and address, please, that would be great.
My name's Bill Quirk, and I'm with Tri-State Bobcat. And our address is 1800 West Highway 13. It's in Burnsville.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming in. I guess my first probably area to explore right off the bat is the, your comments or thoughts on the sign issue, what you would like, that sort of thing.
Well, and you know, and I've discussed it with Chris, and what we feel is that, you know, it represents, you know, we're buying the Burnsville Bowl. And the Burnsville Bowl is, if you mention the Burnsville Bowl in the Twin Cities, everybody knows what it represents. You know, Hulk Hogan brought it up on WDGY the other morning. So it's, it's been there forever and, and I think that people associate the sign with Burnsville Bowl. And, and that's part of it. And that's what, what we, what we wanted to do was clean it up, you know, get rid of all the gaudiness of it and just have it as it is. It's, we feel it's part of the building. And that's kind of where we come from. The visibility's nice. You know, you can see it from 13. We're a little bit off 13. We have a better, where we're located today, we have better visibility until they put the bridge in, then we disappear. And we've been in Burnsville for 28 years now. And we like, we like it. We, you know, we wanted to be within a mile of where our site was, and this site has been available for a while. And it fits our needs really well. We'd just like to be able to have some visibility. And we're a little bit off the beaten path when we're that block off Highway 13. But we think we can make it look nice and we can, we think it's part of that building, part of the history of that building. And people will identify with it. Well, that's, that's kind of where we're coming from with that signage.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions at this point?
Any comments on any of the other conditions that are in the recommendation?
The only thing we just want to clarify, and I, and I spoke with Chris before the meeting, and our equipment is slightly taller than six feet. And the language says no taller than six feet. Maybe if we could change it a little bit to say about six feet. Because our machines, our machines are 76 inches tall, they're 81 inches tall. And as he pointed out, we're going to be 100 feet off of 12th Avenue. And then there's going to be a decorative wall that's up there. And our machines are not going to be parked right up against the wall, but they're going to be, you know, displayed out in that area out there and stored out there. The, to the rear of the building, to the east of the building, where we're putting up the landscaping, and we're putting up the taller trees and the screening, we'll probably put our service machines and anything that's a little taller so that it disappears from view from the street. You know, we want this to be our Taj Mahal. This is going to be our corporate headquarters and we want it to look nice. That's one of the reasons we're putting that decorative display to the south that will be, be visible from 13. We want it to be a little nicer. We want it to be landscaped and we want it to display our product line well. So we, we just want, we don't want it to ever be an issue that Chris would have to step in and enforce it because he had a complaint from somebody and you're, and you are out there with a measuring stick, that's all. Just so, we want to be upfront with it. That we're slightly taller.
All right. Any other questions or issues you have?
Anything with, we've hired a good architectural firm, put some good, good plans together for us. So-
Good.
We'd be proud to move there.
All right. Anything else? Any other question? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
This is a public hearing. At this, this time, I'll open the public hearing for anyone that would care to step forward and have a question or a comment at this time. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any, Mr. Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is for Chris. Regarding the six-foot high, you know, the gentleman spoke about, is that required by ordinance, six feet? That's why we have it there?
Uh, excuse me, commissioners. The ordinance outlines that any exterior storage shall not exceed the height of the perimeter screening. So in this case, six feet would equal six feet within, the six-foot fence would be six fi, six feet within the storage area. six five, six feet within the storage area. Based on some of the, the heights of the equipment, staff would be comfortable shifting that to seven feet. That would encompass all, that would give us 84 inches and encompass all the equipment. The east side of the property will be screened with the trees and the shrubbery, and I believe 12 inches over the, the span of that storage area is, is not a concern.
Mr. Chair, that's what I was trying to get at, why the six feet? In view of what Chris has said, I would make a friendly, suggest a friendly amendment to go with the seven feet, 84 inches.
Okay. Mr. Berdick?
I agree wholeheartedly. I, you know, if I was operating this business and I, I get where it's coming from, from a, I like seven feet. And we have that ability, correct, Chris? In a CUP, we can make that adjustment.
Correct.
And I, I, I think that's, I mean, this is very upfront with us about how tall the equipment is and I, I am in full support of the, the seven feet. I guess I want to talk about the sign a little bit. I, I, they've done a great job with the facility. I mean, I, I know we've had issues as a company with, or as a city with the issues with what happened at Burnsville Bowl from a police standpoint. And I think this is a great use. I'm excited that they're staying in Burnsville. And from a screening standpoint, they've done a great job with the, you know, the east side of the parking lot. But no different than what we get asked about, you know, when we make exclusions or do something for somebody and then what's, how's that going to affect us in the future when someone else comes back and says, well, you did this for this person from a non-conforming. I'm still, that's kind of tough. I need to, I need to think through that. So I guess I'd be curious to see what everyone else has to say about that. But the rest of the conditions, the applicant didn't have any issues with, so I could be in support of this, especially with the adjustment on the, on the storage.
Thank you, Mr. Berdick. I guess, yeah, I'm looking maybe also along that line for some comments on the sign. Obviously, that's the main issue. I, I think Mr. Berdick was, hits, hits the point in the sense of, you know, we just, we just had in a sign issue here a month or two ago on, on the new 13. It doesn't, doesn't conform. My, my thought is that we, we probably leave that in and if the council so wishes to make it part of the building, they can obviously correct that, that sort of thing. I guess that, to keep it consistent, but I'm willing to hear thoughts on that as well. Mr. Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding the recommendation from six to seven feet, if we, if we kept the six feet, it means as soon as they finish putting it together, they're breaking the law. So you don't want them to operate knowing they're breaking the law. We have the opportunity now to recommend to the city that we correct it. So that's number one. Regarding the pylon sign, I agree with staff that when we have an opportunity to correct a non-conforming and make it conforming, that we do that. And if the applicant would like to do a pylon, they have approximately 80 square feet, you know, to, to build that pylon. If I may just continue for a second. I would like to commend Tri-State Bobcat a couple of things. One, they have done so well that they need bigger space. Obviously, they have done well. And it goes to say that their management and their dealings with their customers is excellent and that's why they need more space. Secondly, I want to commend them for working with the city of Burnsville to have their new site be their flagship. It speaks well of the city when an existing business can make that commitment and say, we want to be here, we want to be in Burnsville, and we have a location within the boundaries of Burnsville. That speaks well. So I commend Tri-State Bobcat for doing well as a business and for working with city and to remain in the city. Thank you.
Any other thoughts from Mr. Thomas or Mr. Terry on the seven foot? Specifically, anything else you have?
Well, two things. Regarding the screening and the seven foot, I'm a supporter of the seven foot. I kind of look at it from an operator's point of view. I, I still hate the thought of someone going out there with a tape measure and seven feet. If there was a way to develop a condition where it was a little bit more operator-friendly, you know, does not exceed the screen height by more than one foot. And for instance, if he wants to come back and change his screen height, he can. We don't have to deal with that on a regulatory basis. We also have a condition, or a situation where the east of the property line is going to be taller. Some of the taller equipment will go against that line. Is it going to exceed seven feet or not? I don't know, but it sure saves us a lot of heartache, I think, if, from an operator's standpoint and a city's standpoint, if we don't have to worry about a, a special number. Regarding the sign, I guess I'm going to take a little different tact. I, I can support that sign there. I think it is part of the building. I think it's well done based on the architect's renderings. And if that was removed as a condition, I would still support the application.
All right. Mr. Terry?
Well, my, it's a question and comments following up Commissioners on signage of this, of the sign. Maybe if Chris can explain, to clarify a little bit of ambiguity and foginess in this issue here, the purpose of allowing a non-conforming sign to go into a new project, maybe that would make us a little bit more understanding. Is it grandfathered or do hardship to the owner as far as the construction of removal? If there's any specific, you can, you can kind of shed some light on that. Appreciate that.
Certainly. Commissioners, what, the stance that staff has taken in, in following the ordinance, if a non-conforming sign exists, we've allowed them to be refaced, refaced and/or the sign, the sign area replaced. It cannot be enlarged, it cannot be raised in height or anything like that. And if it reaches a point where the structure itself is, is faulty or needs to come down, that non-conformity is, is then eliminated and it won't be permitted to go back up. It would be the same if, let's say your house is too close to the property line, you can repair your house, you can maintain it, you just can't enlarge it, you can't go taller, you can't push it even closer to the property line. And in this situation, I think the conditional use permit gives us some flexibility. We're obviously storing other things outside, we're, we're not self-contained within the building anymore. And that was staff's standpoint is, we have a non-conformity. We felt it was reasonable to add on a, a condition of that. But certainly, that's, that's within the commission's discretion and the council.
If I may, so we are not really creating new specific condition for this specific project. We are, the applicant's still within the parameter, parameter of the city conditions or ordinance, if you will. We are not going away out of our, going out of our way to allow this specific non-conformity play.
Correct. In, in the event, the, the sign in the business had, or I shouldn't say the sign, the business has been vacant, vacant for a certain amount of time. I believe it's six or 12 months. Once that time, by ordinance, once that's lapsed, any non-conformity loses its grandfathered clause. So we certainly have the ability to, to have the sign removed and the applicant is, is within the ordinance, making no exception or no specific statement about the business. It should be removed. The applicant is seeking relief from that.
Sir, did you want to just have some comment? If you'd state your name and address, please.
I am Todd, Todd Mohigan, Mohigan Hanson Architectural Group.
Where are you, where are you located?
1012 Oak Center Drive, Wayzata, Minnesota.
Thank you, sir.
I think I'm uniquely qualified to maybe talk about some things from the aesthetic standpoint. What Chris was talking about is, is true because it's typically in cities when properties have been vacant for a while, there's kind of a whole new toolbox that you can use. But on the reverse side, if we would look at this and say that it was not vacant for a while, which I think we do need to recognize the fact that it's been vacant for a while and you've got somebody who wants to expand their business in your town, and one of the reasons that they want, they're interested in this building is you have a unique feature on that building. And that unique feature is that sign. And from a standpoint of aesthetics, it's been redone to a way that it's, I don't feel from an aesthetic standpoint that it's, it's an eyesore to your city. I look at this as, this is an opportunity for you to help out a small business, accentuate their business, and be rewarded for staying in your community because of a unique feature that's already on the building. So by having them take that sign down, it's a substantial sign. That's a lot of steel on that sign. That creates a hardship for him as an operator. And I think it's not a, I don't think it's an unreasonable request for them from an aesthetic standpoint or from an operational standpoint to ask for that sign to remain. And he's, you know, offering to refurbish that sign, which is not an inexpensive endeavor. I mean, that's, that's a sign that's going to take some care and then he's willing to take, take the maintenance to keep it up. So from an aesthetic standpoint, from an operation standpoint, and from a uniqueness standpoint, I think it's an opportunity that I think you should give a small business owner the chance to use it to its fullest versus tearing it down, spending a lot of money to do that, and then building a new pylon sign that in essence is doing the same thing, but it doesn't do it as well. I mean, we can all, I think, agree on that. Thank you.
Just, if you'd hold on just a second. Any questions or anything? Thank you very much. Actually, I wanted to have a follow-up question if you could come back for just one second. I just wanted to ask you about the proposal of seven foot to see if, if the condition was changed to seven feet, would, would you be comfortable, because you had said that everything is, it sounds like under seven feet, would, would you be comfortable with that change as opposed to what Commissioner Thomas had talked about with the more, I guess, leeway approximation, that sort of thing? I was trying to get a handle on it.
I was much more comfortable with the way Mr. Thomas presented it. Because, you know, as our equipment can grow, it does leave us some openings for the future. You know, the product lines we carry today were pretty set on for quite a period of time. So we represent Bobcat and we represent Banded, which is chippers and stump grinders, and they all fall within that proximity. But sometimes our manufacturers come out with new products that are, might be larger. And I think, I mean, I, I thought it was very nice how he put it, put it, because it, it gives both of us some flexibility on both sides of that. But it, it never is a problem until someone complains. And I think we're all aware of that. You know, we think we're doing the right thing and, you know, we're being upfront with it, but you never know where the complaint's going to come from. And I, and I do feel, and like I said, I spoke with Chris about it beforehand, and I just want to be clear that there are, there are some machines that are a little bit taller and we're within those parameters at seven feet. But I think if it gives us a little bit of leeway and, and I think someone else spoke about it, I think you said, you know, we're going to park the product on the, on the back side of the property where we're going to have maybe 20-foot trees or 25-foot trees, then it becomes less of an issue. And I just thought it, so I guess if it's my preference, I'd prefer it the other way, what Mr. Thomas said.
Thank you. Any other questions that you want to follow up?
Go ahead. Oh, Chris, for the six-foot height, do you feel comfortable if we were to say something along what Commissioner Thomas said about substantially screened? I mean, because the applicant, the applicant has done, you know, an excellent job with all of the screening around there. And so to Paul's point about nobody out there with a tape measure, talk to us about what we could get ourselves into, or do you believe we need to land with some sort of specific number?
Commissioners, I put something together, let me read it to you and then we can see if that's reasonable. Materials and equipment kept, kept within the storage yard, so that distinguish it from the pads, shall not exceed more than 12 inches above the height of the screen fence. So it gives you a 12 inches above the fence, and if for some reason the height of the fence in 10 years has to go up, then we, then we would deal with that. It eliminates the applicant and the planning commission, the time for the applicant to come back to the planning commission, and it's something I can work on at a staff level.
So the way you worded that in that instance, if he picks up a new line that's going to be, you know, 15 inches or something, he could at some point simply raise the fence.
Correct.
And have it work. And that's really all he has to do. In most cases, he's only going to have to worry about the fence that faces the south.
Correct.
Okay. Can we go back to the pylon sign? Can you, can you give us, or did you have a chance to look? How far out of conformity is it from a height and a square footage? I mean, are we 15 feet too high? Are we three feet too high? What is the non-conformity piece of the sign as it sits today?
I, I don't want to, I apologize, I don't want to commit to a one specific height, but I know we're between the 20 and 24-foot range from what they would be permitted. And I'm, I'm not sure what the height of the existing pylon is. Todd, do you know? It's, I would assume it's 28, 30 feet, something like that.
That's a pretty good guess. Can I ask a policy question?
Sure, sure.
Typically, from the realm of what we're responsible for, land use and why we're here, if you kind of follow what we're asked to look at, there, it's non-conforming and we would, I think, need to recommend to the city council that it is as stated in, in the conditions. Where the city council has a different authority than we do that can certainly make that decision and can remove that, is that correct?
That is correct. Really, what the, what the planning commission is charged with is the ordinance and the comprehensive plan, or is there a, a reasonable solution getting to the, the height of the screen wall based on the application and the proposed documents? Is there a reasonable nexus to adjust the conditions by a foot or something like that to, to accommodate the outdoor storage?
And I think I can comment on that. I think my understanding is sort of the same, that we're supposed to look at the technical aspects of it and conformity and then if the council wishes for other reasons to change it, that's their prerogative.
They have that prerogative.
Yes, correct. Mr. Terry?
Thank you, Chair. Chris, you mentioned, even though we are allowing a non-conformity or non-confirmed sign to stay within the property, this will expire, any non-conformity items or material would be expired in six to 12 months? Did I, did I understand it right?
Correct.
Do they have to come in front of planning?
No, I don't. It's not, it hasn't been in conformity for 12 months, so therefore the grandfather clause doesn't apply.
It, it is already non-conforming.
Okay.
The fact, the structure itself, the fact that the sign's still there, it's non-conforming. That is, again, based on the, the time the business has been out of operation and the building's been vacant and so forth. So again, I don't think we're asking the applicant to remove the sign. We're not overreaching our bounds legally because the sign's already our bounds legally because the sign's already nonconforming. There, as Commissioner Bradrick said, that's where the, the council has the ability to, put the, the ordinance aside and, and make policy decisions.
Follow up on that. So as far as the safety and structure of the sign, the city is completely okay with the exist, with the way it is?
Correct. We have, we have no reason to believe the sign's falling apart or falling over or anything like that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I guess, first thing, maybe the easy one, with the new language proposed by Mr. Slania, everybody, everybody in agreement with that? All right, that's good. I guess then the only question is the signage, so I guess I'll, we either have to have amendment or take it as, as it is as far as the condition goes. I'm, I'm willing to listen to, I guess, the positions on that at this point. Mr. Teary?
I think city, every city that I worked with in the past, they do have some language of do hardship to the owner as far as the moving, removing items or part of the construction, existing structure and so forth. So we are open to how we interpret the language, as far as my, my old practice that we dealt with cities. So from what I understand, that's how the applicant is approaching toward this specific issue here, and we are responding accordingly.
Correct. I guess the question is, how do we feel about the sign, whether the condition should be in or out as far as getting the, our votes in? So, Mr. Thomas?
Well, obviously, I, I would support removing the condition. But that being said, I'd also defer to the council, and I would also support the applicant's application for final and preliminary plat and CUP with that condition involved, and let the council make that final decision.
Mr. Singh?
I mean, I would, I would support staff on keeping the condition. Obviously, the city council does listen to our discussions, and they can draw their own conclusion and make their policy change they want. When a, a nonconforming has lost its grandfathership status, we have to do what we have to do and do the right thing. They may correct that and put in what's necessary to make everything conforming, and that's what staff is doing. We only make recommendations to the city council. City council, if we are going to change that, it's like we are making policy recommendations, and I don't want to do that. I want to leave that to the elected people at the city council. That's my one. I understand what the applicant is saying. I mean, and if I, I mean, could have waved a wand and say, let him keep it, let, I'll let him keep it, but I don't want to make that recommendation.
I, thank you. Mr. Slania, did you have any other comments?
Nope.
Okay. I would, I would agree with, with Mr. Singh. I, if, if it was up to me, I, I think I'd keep it. I think with what we're supposed to do, we're looking at the grandfathered and whether it is grandfathered and the technical aspects, and I, I guess my thought would be I would recommend to the council that they look hard and, and long at that as, as a condition that maybe should be taken out. But I think from our perspective, I would be in support of it with the condition. That would be my thoughts on it.
I would be willing to make a motion.
All right.
And Chris, you may have to.
Sure.
But I move that the planning commission recommend the city council approval of the application for a preliminary and final plat of one-lot subdivision to be known as Tri-State Bobcat Edition, and a conditional use permit for outdoor sales and storage located at 1200 Highway 13 East with the following four conditions. Number one, the existing pylon billboard sign structure shall be removed. Number two, prior to recording the plat, the application shall, the applicant shall revise the plat drawings to correct the sidewalk encroachment along Riverwood Drive. Number three, the applicant shall revise the style of light fixtures to downcast prior to releasing of building permits. Number four, the applicant is allowed to repaint the existing block as proposed with the approval. And then number five, can I reference that the staff's going to work through that or per what you gave us?
Reference the revised condition.
I'd like to reference number five, the revised condition that you had stated to us that we had all agreed upon.
Thank you, Mr. Bradrick. The motion moved second?
Second, Chair.
Second, Mr. Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes 5-0. This will go to the council December 17th?
Seventeenth, week from tomorrow.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is any updates, Commission?
None from me, Chair.
Staff?
Nothing?
The Chair just wants to wish staff and Commissioners happy holiday season, whatever holiday you, you celebrate. Have fun, be careful, and best wishes for 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Singh. Do you believe this is the last meeting of this year?
This is it.
All right. Thank you. I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved? Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
All right.